Well, hi, everybody. It looks like we're all here. It's almost seven o'clock. Is everybody good with their video and their mics? Do you need to check them out or test them out? Right at the rock. Great. And everyone else is doing okay? Hey, Trisha, are you there? You are there. I see you. I sent you an email, but I didn't. I was trying to not send it to your council email. And so I have two others that I sent it to. So will you let me know if I actually reached you?
Yes, I believe I saw that come in my inbox.
Oh, good, good, good. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Wonderful. All right, it's seven o'clock straight up. It looks like we're all gathered here again together. Nice to see you all. Hope you had a great two weeks and have stayed as cool and enjoyed the outdoors as much as I have tried to. Although it's hard to take my air conditioning outdoors, and I have done a lot of that. So let's get on. August 20th, 2020, seven o'clock PM. City Council meeting of Oak Ridge is now in session. Can Brian, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Jackie, will you call the roll for us?
Yes. Mayor Holston?
Here.
Councillor McClelland?
Here.
Councillor Whitney?
Here.
Councillor Forcombe?
Here.
Councillor Maxfield?
Here.
Councillor Kenyon?
Here.
Councillor Hollitt?
Here.
Wonderful. So all of you who are not councillors, I would just remind you to mute yourselves so that we don't have any interference. I would appreciate it. Thank you. And additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda? I actually have a couple. Council, do you have any changes that you would like to make? City Administrator, do you have any changes you would, you need to make?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I actually would like to move an item out of the consent agenda. Eight point two, the Intergovernmental Agreement for Westford Police, Fire, and Shared Employee. Like to move that down to ten point one point four rather than include it in the consent agenda. If council is okay with that? Okay, I see a couple nodded heads, so.
Yes.
That's good. Or raise hands is good too. Wait, I gotta make it all that way. Hold on. This is a good test. How do I see all of you?
Kathy, I'm curious if you realize that that IGA is not only for the fire department, but also the police department?
Yes, I do. Yeah, yeah, and the shared employees. So yes, I would like to take it out of the consent agenda and discuss it separately. Are you okay with that, Chrissy?
Yeah, I was just thinking that maybe it should be under the police department one, but maybe it's more pertaining to the fire department aspect of it is what you're wanting to discuss.
No, actually, I actually want to talk about the police department part of it. So I just want to put it under business from city administration. Ten point, one point and added a four in there. Okay, let's move on. Mayor comments. Oh, well, there we go. Public comments. I see some people here. Do we have anybody at the rock?
Yes, ma'am, we have one citizen.
And is he or she wanting to do any public comment?
Yes, ma'am. Front and center, we'll get him here soon.
Okay. That sounds good.
Okay, so. What I'm seeing is that more.
If everyone can mute.
Just about everybody.
Somebody needs to mute themselves.
This information that I'm getting is extremely important. In your mind.
I'm not sure who's talking.
Go ahead.
Either I can't hear him or understand him.
Go ahead.
Bobby Splitoff, 47587 Keller Road, Oak Ridge, Oregon. Good morning, all, or afternoon. I want to try to find out why we are not having any recording up in the City Hall anymore. We used to have it all the time, and now I was told that we no longer have that.
A recording? Sorry, what do you mean?
Up in the admin area, the lobby.
We have two cameras that are filming all the time.
I was told they were not.
Two cameras that film their motion triggered.
Okay. And I think I was also told by Mayor Holston that her and the previous intern CA was in there, and they decided to do away with those. That the only thing that's being recorded is the courtroom session, the exterior of the building, and the police department jail. That's what was explained to me down. I think it's Marsha and.
Back when Marsha was here, the cameras fell into disrepair, so they just elected to not get them fixed due to cost. And when I got here, I bought three cameras, two of which are mounted, and the other one is the spare that's under charge. I can't speak to the outside of the building, and I'm not sure.
Yeah. So what is being recorded right there?
I'm sorry?
It is being recorded in the main lobby area there?
Being recorded in the lobby area, and it's being recorded in the passageway that goes to the conference room.
Going to that. Okay. Yeah, because see, I was told different.
I can't help you there.
Yeah, okay. Sure, thank you for clearing that up. That's what I'd like to bring up. One of the things, and then I hate to be the dog in the head, but when we turn in our signature sheets for the final time to be taken in, there's only two people signed on the list. Gary Carl and myself. And I know there's other people that turned in that didn't get it signed and.
Jackie explained to me today that after the packages go to the county clerk, and she reviews the signatures and reviews the application and approves it, it comes back, and that's when you sign on the candidate sheet, that you've accepted it, and you're going to, and you're notified you're on the ballot.
Oh, because they haven't been signed before.
Well, that was for Leah's purposes. She likes to know that things have been accepted.
Oh, so it's two different things then?
Leah's was just a personal thing that she does.
Okay. And.
Hadi, your three minutes are up. Do you have any other questions? Because I think both of your questions were answered.
Yep, both are answered, and thank you very much.
You're welcome, Hadi. Thank you. Now, I see a hand raised. I see Dan Barkley has a hand raised. If there's any other members of the public that I, that are online who want to address the council, hit the little blue hand raise, and I will ask again after Dan has gone. So Dan, if you are ready, please go ahead.
Well, quick question. And one, normally when the Admiral says front and center, people move a little bit quicker than that. I'm just saying.
Point well taken.
Just a quick question. Because I actually have two concerns. One's a comment on an agenda item, the other would be more public comment. Will I have the opportunity for both, or do I need to pick one or the other, or?
It depends on the agenda item.
It is thirteen point nine, I believe, the RTMP issue.
The resolution? Well, I hadn't planned on taking public comment during that time, but but I will. I actually will.
So I could do three minutes now in normal non-agenda items in three minutes on agenda?
Yes, Dan, go ahead.
And this one I didn't write down, but it's just a suggestion. As I recall, May of 2015, I suggested publicly that, you know, the city adopts some, some kind of webcast format where, you know, things were live, and you weren't waiting weeks or months or whatever on the hard copy minutes on meetings. And, you know, get good lip service, and it was all taken with a grain of salt. And one of the first things Brian did when he got here was to actually, you know, do the YouTube thing that's evolved into Zoom. And that's, that's all great, and gives people real time. The unforeseen problem with that, and I understand that that meets the public meetings law requirement to make the meetings available. But in the absence of the hard copy, you can't go to the city website, which needs some serious housekeeping. But you can't do a search unless you've got time to sit through a two-hour meeting or binge-watch two-hour Zoom videos. The research is much more cumbersome, and I think it would be helpful if there were a timeline that people could go to a specific part or to, you know, something that would be helpful for the voters with an upcoming election to research, you know, different candidate backgrounds and make informed decisions come November.
So Dan, are you indicating that you'd like to be able to search the video, or you just want to be able to search the written minutes?
The video, you actually have to use the slide bar to get to the part that you want. Whereas if there were time tags, say, at one minute this happens, at two minutes this happens, so on and so forth. Or the hard copy that you could actually, you know, pull up, print out, whatever.
Well, the hard copy is available. Is that something that you're not seeing? The hard copy?
Actually, I could probably go to the, to the details on the, on the meeting, and it would be there.
Yeah, it would be.
I'm just saying, you know, in the interest of informed voters and all that sort of thing, it might be helpful to put time tags in there that, you know, this agenda item happened.
Sure, sure.
Because I, you know, for me personally, me sitting through a two or maybe five-hour meeting.
Dan, that's your three minutes.
Okay, anyhow, that, just a suggestion. I think the video is great.
Thank you.
Just a suggestion.
All right, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Don't forget to click off your little blue hand. Is there anyone else who is on our Zoom meeting in the public who would like to make a comment? I don't see any blue hands, but if you are trying to unmute yourself and speak up. No? Okay, so I will move on to mayor's comments, announcements, and/or proclamations. I don't actually really have too much, much to say at all. You know, I think we're pleased that we have our candidates in. Looking forward to an election for the city. And other than that, I also do want to extend my thanks to Councillor McClelland. The little blue poles are coming along, and I appreciate your work on them. That's really great. I wanted to extend some thanks to Councillor Hollitt. She is staying on top of all of the questions that are coming in regarding fire season. And I think we were doing a pretty good job answering questions from the various folks. And I just want to remind everybody in the community that we are still in a red flag season, red flag time. And that means that we are not burning outdoors at all, even for recreational purposes. And I believe we are also not mowing our lawns if you're using an internal combustion engine or in an area that sparks, excuse me, sparks may occur. So let's be careful and safe out there. We know our neighbor to the south, California, is burning up, and we have plenty of fires here in Oregon. So we are crossing our fingers, knocking on wood, and filling our buckets. So let's be safe out there, everybody. I'm going to move on to number seven, council comments and announcements. Council, do you have anything that you would like to share with the community?
I have a question for Brian.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I wanted to know if he could clarify again what he told Hadi a minute ago about the signature sheet. When, when does it get signed?
For your signature is what I was referring to. So after they're turned in and all the signatures are turned in, everything is carted down, hand-carried to the county clerk who reviews the forms you filled out and reviews the signup sheets or make sure they're a legitimate voter in the jurisdiction. And then she approves them, and then once that comes back, you'll be called, and you will sign a sheet, the candidate sheet. Jackie probably knows the exact term for it, but that's when you will sign, acknowledging that and also acknowledging that your name is going to appear on the ballot.
Okay, I think that, I think that you might want to look up the state. There's a manual on, you know, running receipts. And it does say that when an application is accepted, it's supposed, you're supposed to sign in. So maybe we need to look at changing how our process is working.
I'll ask Jackie, does she have a response? Is it accepted? It's probably not accepted until the county clerk reviews it. Is that correct?
Right, I have a checklist with all the forms, and I check them off as they're turned in. And then when I give them the final letter saying that they are approved and they are a candidate, then we both sign the form. And I have files for every candidate.
Okay, Brian, I'll just, I'll email you what I saw, and you can review and make a decision what you want to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council comment? All right. I don't see anything coming up. Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is, consists of eight point one and eight point three. Eight point one, approval of minutes from July 16th. Eight point three, the Lane County Regional Housing Rehabilitation Program, Intergovernmental Agreement. Do I hear a motion for the consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chrissy. Councillor Hollitt? Um, got it. And Jackie, can you call for a vote, please?
Councillor Whitney?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Councillor Maxfield?
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councillor Forcombe?
Aye.
Councillor McClelland?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you very much, council. Let's move on to business from the city council. We don't have anything on the agenda unless there is anything else that council would like to, like to bring up at this time. I would be willing to consider.
And this is Bobby. I just, there's just one thing I would like to see if there's a way to get a list of, if we were to, let me back up. If we were to contact Travel Oregon and see if they can provide us a list of all the different residents in Oak Ridge that are Airbnbs so that we have an idea of exactly how many we have here and who they are and where they are. Because based on their presentation.
Would you like to do that? You're, you're welcome to contact them and ask them.
Okay, I can, I can try doing that.
Yeah, because I anticipate we're going to be having some discussions about this in the future and where we want to go as a community. So, you know, if we're doing our, doing some background work and looking up things, I think that's great.
Yeah, I do as well. So, okay, I'll do that. I'll get ahold of them. Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby. Anyone else? Okay, let's, I guess I better look at my screen to make sure, since I can't really hear that well. Okay, let's see. Business from the city administrator, ten point one. Brian, will you engage us with ten point one point one, surplus city property?
Yes, ma'am. This, again, as titled, surplus city property. This isn't all the approved surplus city property that is already been voted upon. This is just the most recent. There's some stuff that we thought that disposed of. So what we're trying to do is, is get rid of some of the, this material that is no longer needed. And as you see, we'll dispose of it per the ordinance 931, which is the recently passed public contract and purchasing, which has a section in there about how to dispose of property. In this case, if it's less than $500, you dispose of it in the most efficient way. Anything greater than $500, you would dispose of it either by open bid, auction, or a closed bid. So what we're hoping to do is get the council to approve the attached exhibits, the public work surplus property, and the fire department surplus property so we can move out and clear out some city property.
Great, thank you. Council, can I hear a motion?
Yeah. I move, we approve the surplus list of, for disposition in accordance with the city policy for public contracting and purchasing.
Thank you, Councillor Whitney. Do I have a second? From Councillor McClelland, is that, who said that? Was that you, Councillor Forcombe, or? Okay, got it. Got it. All right, council, do you have any, any questions or discussion?
Yeah, what about the stuff from the police department? They got all those old cars and stuff. Is this included in that?
Yeah, that's what, kind of what I was referring to. They've already been passed, they've already been approved by council for disposition. We've just kind of been sitting back and not doing it. So I'm going to push hard to get that clot cleared out. No approval required for those items, though.
Okay, so do, do we anticipate that these additional items that we're approving now will also go on a quicker timeline?
That's my plan, and you'll probably see a police department list in a couple of meetings. They just couldn't get it all together in time.
Okay. Any other questions, council? If there are no other questions, Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Councillor McClelland?
Aye.
Councillor Maxfield?
Aye.
Councillor Forcombe?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councillor Whitney?
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt?
Aye.
That passes. Thank you, council. Let's move on to ten point one point two. Brian, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, ma'am. This is Eco Generation sponsorship request, and I put a letter from David, I think his name is, David behind it. We're looking for a motion from the floor and a vote. So if you're familiar, Eco Generation is a entity, a nonprofit, that comes to town once a month, parks at the OIP off Fitch Hatchery, and will take plastics that Sandy Hall or Lane Transfer will not take, for the most part. I mean, there's one or two things that no one takes, so. But for him, it's a loss leader because the transportation cost to get out here and to haul all the stuff back. So he's having a tough, tough go of it, particularly in the COVID situation. He's asking all of his people he supports for donations. If you look, the options are to approve a monetary sponsorship at the specified level, which he included in his letter, or you can approve a request for in-kind sponsorship, which might be maybe a little bit of labor on, on a city staff part, or maybe his ability to store some of his material for a week or two, get him time to get his truck or something out back here if he has more than one load. Or you can disprove the request. We're recommending two, given our financial situation, and the motion's before you.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate that. So council, given that we have three options here, I think it will be easier if we all spend a little bit of time talking about this and then move forward with the motion. And I'll open the floor to any councillor who has anything to say about this. Before, go ahead, Councillor Kenyon. I see a hand.
I would be in favor of storing material for a period of time if that would help. I think plenty of OIP. I don't know if you're referring to, like, you know, locked storage or just open.
He would be hoping to get it undercover because it, so it doesn't get soaked, water-soaked. So it would either be in the big yellow building or perhaps under the canopy on Lot Seven.
Okay, and there's plenty of room in the big building, the yellow one. I think that's probably a good option.
There's plenty of room, yes.
I'm okay with that.
You're kind of awful there, Kathy, but I'm sure the in-kind labor would just kind of be sorting and hoping to store.
Okay. I noticed on his letter that he says there are three more pickup times planned for this year. So my question would be if we do in-kind or if we choose to, you know, chuck out $500. Is this just for those three times, or is it for a period of a year? You know, I'm not quite sure what he's asking of us as far as length of time.
I think he's bounded it all in, in calendar year 2020.
Okay.
He might be coming back in 2021 looking for more.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Yeah, I agree with, with Councillor Kenyon. I like the in-kind service. And is he truly a 501(c)(3) or a nonprofit?
That's what he tells me now. I haven't checked it.
Okay, I didn't see any notation on his letter at all, and I was curious. Okay. Any other comments from council that we should consider?
This is Bobby. Sorry.
Go ahead, Bobby.
I was just going to say I agree with the in-kind sponsorship. Although I would like to add that I would really prefer that Public Works kind of helps work with where we store stuff because they would really know what, what was where and kind of where they are with their stuff and just that city.
I'm sure Brian will.
Final decision will be Robert, yes.
Okay, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure. I know we all have great ideas, but sometimes we don't always know, you know, what's going on.
You don't argue with a Marine.
No. Very true.
Are they asking for any kind of money that we need to pay for them, or how's this working?
They'd love to have 500 bucks, but I'm recommending that we do it in kind.
I'm wondering if we can also just state that we will make sure we encourage the community as much as possible to, to bring their recycling so that it makes it more worthwhile for them to, to come up here. I know there's a cost in transportation, all that, but it seems to me, and if I'm wrong, please say so, but it seems to me that if, if he has more, more folks participate in the recycling, he'll have more recycling to, to sell. I'm assuming he sells it.
Yeah, it's interesting. When I had a conversation with him, he mentioned that there's only a couple, a couple types of plastic that he can make money on, and the rest of it's kind of a zero-sum game.
Oh.
But I think he's on, he's, he has said that, yes, the bigger the amount of stuff, the better, even though.
Yeah, and it might be nice to know what that, what those plastics are that he actually makes money on. I mean, it's not that I'm going to go out and buy more of that plastic, but if I have it, I will make sure it gets in. Councillor McClelland, I saw you look like you were going to say something, or?
I was just going to mention the bottom paragraph spells out what the in-kind or $500 would entail, and it does entail those three for the year.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate you pointing that out. Oh, I see. Okay, cool. Awesome, let me get back here. So council, are you ready to make a motion?
What, if we do pay the $500, what fund or what, what does that come out of?
Thin air.
Oh, I, I know we have to, I mean, if we do pay it, I mean, which line item or whatever you want to say, does it come out of?
It would probably come out of a general fund, perhaps professional services or something along those lines.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out. Where, where the $500, if we did, or if we still want to, would come out of?
I appreciate your question, Paul. I'm sorry, I was being flippant. Any, is there a motion?
I move, we approve the request for an in-kind sponsorship.
Councillor Maxfield seconded. Is there any further discussion?
This is Bobby. I'd just like to make a. This is Bobby. Just like to make a friendly amendment. I think we need to be a little more specific. It's a sponsorship of Eco Generation, and I think it would be nice if we put it at a level of covered storage and not put a dollar amount there.
So the motion is to approve the request for in-kind sponsorship?
Yes, and that was it. I just feel like it should be a little more specific.
So that would be up to Counsel McClelland to accept your amendment.
One comment from the C, if I might?
Yes, please.
If you could, if you could just bound it at a value no greater than $500, because I don't want to sort of tie the hands. If he really wants labor instead of storage, then I'd like to have that flexibility. But in whatever case, the value of whatever we offer is between more than $500.
All right. Counsel McClelland?
Okay.
So are you accepting the amendment that says approving the request for in-kind sponsorship with a cap of $500?
Yes.
Thank you. And Paul, did you second that? Would, are you okay with that? Can you resecond it?
I resecond.
Oh, thank you, Tricia. Excellent. All right, can we call on a vote, please? Jackie?
Counsel Kenyon?
Hi.
Counsel Forkham?
Hi.
Counsel Maxfield?
Hi.
Counsel McClelland?
Hi.
Counsel Hollitt?
Hi.
Counsel Whitney?
Hi.
Mayor Holston?
Hi.
That passes. Thank you, Counsel. Let's move on to 10.1.3. Brian, will you introduce this, please?
Yes, ma'am. It's a request from the Three-Legged Crane Public House for outdoor music. Looking for a motion from the floor and a vote. There are no exhibits. So John Crane is looking to, requesting to play outdoor amplified music. In other words, it could be more than just a guy on a guitar. It could be plugged into an amplifier, so you can hear him better from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on the dates listed. Obviously, the one, well, I took away the ones because he was asking for prior to this, but those are the dates that are left. So for this, I'd say we granted him, the city gave him use of two parking spaces on either side of his outdoor seating area, and he wants to put the musician in the parking space in front of Ricky Arborough's facility and play music during these times to hopefully attract more people and bring in some more revenue for his business. So looking at the code, permission of city council is required for this. It is a area that's zoned commercial. Your options are to approve their request for outdoor music, either as read or modified, or do not approve the request. We're recommending option one. It's a limited time. It's only until through September, through the season, and then he would no longer do it. And the motion's before you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. And again, I'm gonna just let Counsel kick this around and have some discussion before we go to a motion. And I'll start that off. My, I'm glad this is only through September 18th. Anything that we can do to help a business to flourish during this time, I'm willing to do, as long as it doesn't violate our codes or offend our sensibilities. I think this is good. I'm a little concerned about amplified music and how many that means. Would that mean he's going to throw a band out there every day? And I, I can't, my sense is he's not going to, but that's, that's not what these words say. So I would want to be careful with that, but I'm not quite sure. I've wrapped my head around how to make that a little more tighter, or if it's necessary to do it. Thoughts?
Mayor, if I might, one comment I forgot to mention is that the ordinance actually has some limitations on outdoor music about not being able to be heard from 500 feet and some other things. So there are some, there's some stick there. If it gets out of hand, we can come in and enforce that ordinance.
Good to know. Thank you, Brian. So go ahead, Counsel Kenyon.
Has anybody talked to the residents that live near there and asked if there would be any issues with that?
I was approached by the resident directly across the street who is very much opposed to this. And we have a resident in the audience, if you want to hear from him, and it's allowed.
I would be open to hearing from someone who is going to be impacted by this, if they are willing to speak.
Yes, Lauren Holt, 43190 First Street. Directly near the Three-Legged Crane. I have no problem with this. I find the Three-Legged Crane offers enjoyment for people. I find that it improves his business. I believe with control, actually control application, it would work very, very well for him. I live right there. If it bothers me, I have to close the window, but I have no problem with this at all.
Thank you, Lauren, for your thoughts. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion before we call for a motion here? All right, can we call, anyone would like to proffer a motion, please?
This is Bobby. I move we authorize the permit for the Three-Legged Crane to have outdoor music on the requested dates.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion, Counsel? All right, Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Counsel Hollitt?
Hi.
Counsel Forkham?
Hi.
Counsel Whitney?
Hi.
Counsel McClelland?
Hi.
Mayor Holston?
Hi.
Counsel Maxfield?
Hi.
Counsel Kenyon?
Hi.
Thank you, Jackie. That motion passes. We're going to move to 10.1.4. This is the one we pulled out of the consent agenda. This is an IGA for the Westford Police and Fire coverage, as well, it is a shared employee that we have with them. The reason I wanted to bring this out of our consent agenda is so that I could have a couple of questions about the police and the law enforcement. In the contract, that, hold on, I can't read that there, but I can get to mine. In the contract with Westford, it states what we will and what we won't do for police coverage. And I'm getting to there. Hold on. Is Chief there tonight, Brian?
No, he has a medical emergency, so Michael is tuned in, and a lot of her aggressive the best she can, but.
Okay, great. Well, the reason I'm, the reason, here's my question, is at one point I had asked, you know, what we do in Westford and what we don't, because I had been approached by a resident of Westford who was concerned about a vicious dog, and had been told that, you know, our police department doesn't take care of that. But I don't see that specifically delineated here, but I'm not an expert in this, in the language that I'm reading. And I want to make sure that whatever we may or may not be doing is well, is well-defined in this, because, you know, we work closely with Westford, and we are all friends and neighbors, and I don't want them to think that we're either not doing our duty, or should be doing something and are feeling bad because we're not. So, Michael, can you maybe help explain this? Because it talks about including enforcement and investigations in the field of public safety, criminal law enforcement, and related fields within the power of the Oprah Chief of Police.
Yeah, I think the confusion comes, especially with animal, any kind of animal complaints, is that we haven't had, we've asked for a separate animal, contract for animal enforcement, and we haven't had that. Suspicious dog or something, I think, can go to state statute, but that's more of a chief explanation. I'm not a pro on that. So I mean, that's the short answer to that, is that we, at one point, we did have a separate contract, and then it just kind of went away. I'm not sure the history of, you know, of why that happened.
Okay.
That's an administration thing.
When you say you have, we had a separate contract, was it, was it a contract that was an addendum to this? Or did we actually contract out for that service at an additional cost?
No, this is a CA. So it used to be included in the contract we have with Westford Animal Control, or perhaps way back when, but it hasn't been included, and they actually went out and shopped around for an animal control contract with Lane County and found it prohibitively expensive. So that's why they don't have an animal control contract. We specifically left it out of this contract because we don't want to do animal control for Westford. If, and Michael says, if it becomes a criminal thing, then yes, we'll go and help, but we do not want to do animal control for Westford unless they want to pay for it in a separate contract.
Okay, so the contract as it is worded, and Westford understands that. That's clear.
At least the mayor and the recorder do. I'm not sure if the citizen of Westford understands that.
I understand that, too. Okay, well, that is one of the questions that I had about that. And also, I wanted to know whether or not this contract, the rate of pay is higher than last year's? Have we adjusted for inflation at all, or do we just carry over the same number? Counsel Kenyon, I see your hand.
Do you want to answer the question, or do you want to wait on Counsel Kenyon?
Let's ask Counsel Kenyon to give her a question, too. Maybe we can kill two birds with one stone.
Well, mine was a little different. I wanted to clarify what would, what would make an animal call a criminal call? Is that like if an animal bites someone, or is attacking someone, is that criminal?
That's a chief question that I'll have to ask him to get back to you, if you don't mind.
Okay. As regards, then, to the amount of the contract, where are we with that?
So it actually exceeds the rate of inflation. What we've done is we've compared, taken hourly cost of officers, and then compared it with the contract of Lowell, and the thing that makes this contact different than Lowell's contract, Lowell's just straight by the hour, and they only get the 40 hours, and that's it. This contract actually included some emergency response time for outside the 20 hours, the 20 hours.
Okay.
So when you throw that in, that drives up the cost, and it also makes it a lot harder to really put an exact figure like we have on Lowell's. But I'll tell you that it increased approximately 10%, I believe is the number, and it's, so I believe it a fair contract.
Okay, and so does that mean that we are covering our costs, that it's not costing us to do this?
If we stay disciplined about what's an emergency call, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Counsel Kenyon, I saw your hand again.
Yeah, my other question would be if Westford decided they wanted to add some kind of coverage for vicious animals attacking or something, is this contract something they could amend or add to at any time during the year?
I would ask for a separate contract, exclusive of this contract.
Okay. All right.
And it would come to Counsel.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any other questions? If there are no other questions, can I have a motion to approve the Westford Police, Fire, and Shared Employee Intergovernmental Agreement?
There's not a motion written there, but I'll wing it.
Okay, go for it.
I move that we sign or approve the intergovernmental agreements with Westford.
Thank you, Counsel Kenyon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counsel Whitney. Any other discussion? There being none, Jackie, will you call the roll, please?
Counsel Hollitt?
Hi.
Counsel Whitney?
Hi.
Counsel Kenyon?
Hi.
Counsel Maxfield?
Hi.
Counsel Forkham?
Hi.
Counsel McClelland?
Hi.
Mayor Holston?
Hi.
That passes. Thank you, Counsel. Let's move on to 10.2 Finance Director Update. Brian?
Were we gonna do the 8.3 for SVVP IG?
I'm sorry, we did that. 8.3, we did that in the consent agenda.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Tricia. I always appreciate it. So 10.2 Finance Director Update, Brian?
Yes, ma'am. Eric is connected, and I'll ask him to give us a brief synopsis of where he is.
Hi, Eric.
Hello. I've just been working with Bill since I got there and trying really hard to get my hands around everything. Trying to understand the system and all the working parts, and just trying to make sure that I do a good job.
Good, good. Is there anything we can do as Counsel to help you?
Not yet. I still have a lot of the accounting software to learn, I think, yeah.
I understand. Well, know that we stand ready to help in any way we can do.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, Police Department update. Michael, were you going to do that?
There was confusion when Chief said, go to the meeting. We don't have a report tonight. So, thank you.
I appreciate your forthrightness. Okay, Fire Department update?
Well, I see Scott is dialed in. Scott, do you have anything for tonight?
Are you there, Scott?
They've been called away.
Sorry about that. I'm actually attending another class, so I don't have anything prepared. I was just kind of listening with both ears, different devices, so.
Excellent.
I don't have anything for you tonight.
Not a problem. Thank you for staying on top of all of our fire conditions.
In general, Fire Department, they've, their actually transport rate has increased greatly in the past two or three weeks. It's been a lot of business. It's averaging somewhere around 75%. So that's, is of interest. We've, we're in the middle of the conflagration season, and we have yet to be called, even though we're on the schedule, and that's a good thing, because that means there's no fires nearby. And we are working with, we'll be taking the fire gear that is, Hazel Dell has an item, and as we did just approve, and we'll auction that off. Other than that, the volunteers are working hard, and we got a new scheduling software in that allows us to better track participation and easier signups. So I think that'll improve both for the users and for the staff.
Great.
Other than that, it's, they're working hard.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And do we have a Public Works update?
Yep, let me pull it up here. All right, for July, you're going to, 24 million, seven gallons distributed, 6.7 treated, 39 service orders, and 20 locates. They're working hard outside doing street maintenance, pothole repairs, had a tree removal and park maintenance going on by Community Hall, because the roots were getting into the sewer lines continually. So we've replaced two water meters, installed a new roof at the OIP's weight station. Fire hydrant locks because we were. Fire hydrant locks because we were having some difficulties with, uh, some of the contractors that work for U P, uh, helping themselves for water. So we locked down the hydrants and, uh, a lot of brush and weed abatement. And making sure the irrigation systems are working. Travis actually successfully passed two exams now at level one. Uh, water treatment and water distributing level one. So congratulations for him. And that gives us five operators across the, uh, the team. So happy to, uh, happy to see that.
That's good. That's good. I understand we're going to be doing some, um, curb painting soon or have we started that?
Curb cleaning. Um, I'll have to ask Robert. I'm not sure on that one.
Yeah, okay. I, I just, I saw them chipping the paint off the corners of the, and they said, oh yeah, this time of year we start painting again and I. And I didn't realize that was a yearly thing, but, uh, but thank you for doing that. Um, I also had a question. Um, there is, um, there is the ability for people to purchase. Road informational signs such as, um, slow down and respect my community please type of thing online. Should, should a individual choose to purchase that? Is it possible to mount it on a pole that is pre-existing or would they have to create something of their own?
That's going to be a question I can answer tonight, but I will get back to you.
Okay, I, I would appreciate an answer to that. Um, and they're not, they're not that expensive actually. Um, so I was, I was surprised to see that. All right.
Hey Kathy, this is Bobby.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to add something even though they're not my updates.
Okay.
First off, I have to say thank goodness the Fire Department has an increase because my work at S and D S has just been wildly insane.
Really?
So yeah, so it's kind of interesting, but I wanted to say that the Police Department has been really great. At reaching out to me, um, for some clients of mine that they've been working with or, or people that they've worked with that might fall into my realm. At my work, um, I just think it's, it's great. It allows us to problem solve together and find answers together to really, um. Kind of holistically look at the, the issues and see what we can do to help if we can help or if somebody's willing to help. So I just wanted to say that I think that is great and I think it's good for our community.
Thanks Bobby. I really appreciate you sharing that, you know, during this, especially during this time, um, there are so many people out there that, that. The need and, and, and can use the encouragement and the helping hand that, that all of us can, can provide if we just open our eyes a little bit. So thanks Bobby. It's nice to know that the Police Department is doing a good job of that. I really appreciate it. Counsel, I believe also. Uh, we're having, we're not in Community Services yet. So Brian, let's move to Community Services.
As I mentioned previously, Green Waters up and running. Um, still trying to get the wifi working up there. I gotta talk to them all about it. It's, I went out and tested it the other day and it's not, not available. So they mentioned they were going to start it up again. Uh, yeah, uh, Green Waters, uh, we are, uh, Robert's doing a good job keeping it up to speed. Um, we do have a couple of events coming in. I think I may have mentioned already that are going to, or at least one's going to use Green Waters, which is going to be the, uh, Triple Summit Challenge.
Okay.
And they've got a pretty good COVID mitigation plan. Other than that, I found out that, uh, soon there'll be some seismic reinforcing to the Salmon Creek Bridge that the. DOT is going to do. And they're just in the preliminary stages of getting permission from the city and getting permission from the Army Corps about the, because it's going to be around the levee. So, uh, that, that's good news, uh, that there'll be improvements to the Salmon Creek Bridge. And let's see, we are moving, uh, fast on the Imba Grant, uh, construction. Rick is going to kind of carry that for me, uh, as a contractor and, uh, we've got, uh, George Custer signed on along with, uh, Robert. So we're working hard to get that thing in place and, uh, at least on, you know, start with the pavilion like I mentioned last time. And then move on to the restrooms once, uh, once the contractor is available to do that. And that's what I've got for Community Services.
So, um, given the Imba and how long it has taken and, um, how many different agencies we had to get involved in order to make that happen. Um, what are our thoughts about maybe doing a ribbon cutting when it's all done and inviting, um, uh, DeFazio to come since he was instrumental and making sure that that happened and pushed it hard? It might not, might, we could do it COVID, you know, follow COVID regulations, but. I, we definitely need to make sure that we take pictures of it and let his office know that it is completed. Um, so think about it. I imagine it'll be a month or so before it's done, won't it? Or longer?
Much longer because the contractor can't start in the restroom until, uh, late, mid-September.
Oh, good. So we have some time to, to put, uh, put some thought into it. Um, so Counsel, just, um, shoot me an email if you have some ideas about it, pros or cons, or, you know, what we could do. It might be a good opportunity to, um, showcase, show, um, the community that, that the money finally did get spent. And I know there's a long history there. Um, and, uh, let's see what else I was going to say. Oh, I was going to ask you about Green Waters Park. How are we doing as far as, um. Following guidelines for our playgrounds? Are those guidelines still in place that we can't open our playgrounds? I know we were kind of doing, matching whatever the state and county said.
Yeah, it's, uh, the playgrounds can be open. I, I chose to open the, the one, uh, um. Off Hill Street first, just because that's the most popular one.
Right.
Um, it's, the, the problem I have is that if I open up the rest, it's, it, the labor rate goes way up. The amount of labor required to clean them twice a day.
Okay.
And these guys in the middle of cutting brush and everything else and it would.
Yeah.
It would take them away from their, kind of their functional task.
No, I appreciate that. Okay. Um, thank you for that answer. I appreciate that. Um, so I think that can, that concludes our business from the City Administration. We're going to move into number 11, um, which is Oak Ridge Industrial Park rezoning and this will be a public hearing. At this point, I need to ask if there are any declared conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts regarding this public hearing? Or rezoning in the Oak Ridge Industrial Park?
Yeah, this is Bobby. I am going to declare a potential conflict of interest because I believe you guys are contracting with Rick Zelstra on this. And he is a relative.
That's correct.
Okay.
And if any of you guys think it should actually be a potential, let me know because I was just kind of waffling back and forth.
Thank you. I appreciate that Bobby. Um, okay, so, so noted. So it is now, um, 7:56 on August 20th and we're opening a public hearing on the Oak Ridge Industrial Park Rezone. Public hearing is now open. Brian, will you, um, give us the staff report or Rick, are you giving the staff report?
Rick is, uh, intending to give the staff report. Are you dialed in, Rick?
I'm here, yep.
Hi Rick.
So. Um, the staff report's kind of long and lengthy. Um, I'm going to skim a lot of it, but the, the gist of it is. This is, uh, two requests. Each request comes with a comprehensive map plan amendment and a zone change to follow the, um, map amendments. Uh, request number one is for, uh, nine lots at the industrial park to be. The comprehensive map plan to be changed from heavy industrial to mixed use. Um, and those will be lots, uh, known as number one, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25. And then request number two is, uh, the same, a comprehensive map amendment from heavy industrial to parks, recreation and open space. Uh, for the lots, uh, number three, number four and number 39. Um, for the background, um, most of the properties, as we all know, are vacant and that was part of the purchase of the industrial park. And it was owned heavy industrial when they became part of the city. Most of the lots remain vacant since the time of purchase. There have been several interested buyers over the past years, but due to zoning regulations, none of them come to fruition on the properties listed, uh, to becoming mixed use. The old mill site has had various cleanup projects that resulted in mandatory improvements of wetlands and riparian area that also prevents heavy industrial use. And the properties listed to become parks and open spaces. And that would remove restrictions from the heavy industrial and greatly support the efforts of the natural conservation of those improvements. Um, a review of these changes was considered by the Planning Commission during two public hearings. First one on May 19th, second on June 2nd. Like, uh, Planning Commission unanimously voted for a recommendation to City Council for. Change to both comprehensive plan map and the zoning map as outlined in request number one and number two. Um, with a, uh. Pretty important, uh, condition that the condition is coming from, um, both D E Q and, uh, Department of Land Conservation Development. And this is, that what I'm about to read was actually part of their, uh, motion. And the comprehensive plan map and zone district change from heavy industrial to parks, recreation. With the requirements of the city shall and saw signage in multiple languages that the, at the ponds that warn visitors of sediment contamination of the ponds. Uh, designated fishing in the ponds is only be permissible using catch and release protocols. And, uh, right in a deed restriction that clarifies the limitations on fishing and other water-based activities in the former long, log ponds. Uh, the deed restriction shall outline any institutional remedies. Should this city desire to stock the ponds for fishing or use the ponds for any water-related activities. Considerations for the comprehensive plan map amendment, uh, for the zoning change to align with the comprehensive plan map, the City Council needs to consider rec. Consider recommended changes to the comp plan map for the City Council to consider, um, or, and then a change to order, Order 874. Which is a city zoning that gives a guidance on criteria to be applied in this zone change. Um, but we don't really have anywhere that outlines a guidance for a map plan amendment. But per D L C D recommendations, uh, they are identical and we should use the same. Consideration for both the map, the, the comp plan and the zone map. Sorry, that's kind of a bit much. So. That's it in a nutshell, and I'm sure there are questions.
All right. Thank you for that. Public and those who are, um, calling in on Zoom as before. Please indicate with a raised hand or unmute yourself if you wanted to make a comment. Um, are there any, um, individuals at the WAC who would like to make a comment in the public or statements in favor? I am calling for statements in favor and I am calling for statements in favor.
None of the way.
And I, I see, um, Deborah Borton's hand. Deborah, please move, please unmute yourself and speak forth.
I, okay, I can have it. Do you hear me?
I hear you now.
Okay, so, um, I have been one of the many, many volunteers up there at the said properties. Doing a lot of the work you guys see up there, clearing blackberries and brush and getting ready for some of the events that's going to happen at the park. Um, I cannot tell you, and I'm not looking for a pat on the back, but I can tell you how. Much interest and the public has come to us and said, wow, nice job. The, the public seems to be very thrilled that we're helping clear these trails. And getting the blackberries down and getting this ready for. Use in particular hiking trails, bicycling. And what we are doing is I'm a member of the local Oak Ridge Disc Golf Club. Which is our goal is to get the golf club course in there going and, um. I am very much in favor of this. There are so many people that have contacted us that I can't even. Tell you how many are so much in favor. We have had, um. Even out of town people, owners of business from Ben to Eugene who have come up and actually helped. Clear brush as well. Um, it is going to be a very attractive spot for a lot of public events and please approve us. Thanks.
Thank you, Deborah. I appreciate it. Is there anyone, anyone else who wishes to make statement in favor?
Yeah, Kathy, this is Jason.
Hi Jason.
I'm, I'm here. Yeah, yeah. And yes, I am in favor of this. Uh, I've been working on this project. Uh, Deborah's been a disciple of, of mine of sorts. Uh, working on this. And, uh, yes, um, it's, it's pretty amazing out there and I really can't say much more than what Deb said. She did a really good job. And, uh, uh, you know, I, it's, I pulled, poured my heart into this thing and we all have and, and we're really hoping to see it happen, come to fruition. The big day.
Excellent.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a statement in favor? If there are no further statements in favor, um, are there any statements in opposition? I'm calling for statements in opposition. And Deborah, I'm assuming your blue hand means that you just left it up there. Yeah. Um, is there any other statements in opposition? I think that was my third time. Um, are there any statements in general? I'm calling for any statements in general. Are there any statements in general? There are no statements in general. This public hearing is closed at 8:04 Thursday, 8:20, 2020. Um, we will now open it up for findings of fact, council discussion and then council directed action. Take a breath. Okay, findings of fact. Um, I think that's just questions about, um, what we've heard.
If I may, so the finding, the finding of fact is where, um, this proposal aligns with our comprehensive plan. And the, the, there's four criteria. For zone change that we are also using for a comp change. And those are the, those are the finding of fact is how those criteria apply. And the first criteria is, uh, the proposed amendment, uh, must conform with the comprehensive plan. And in this situation, um, if, um. If, if the council approves this motion, then it will conform with the comprehensive plan because it will also change the comprehensive plan. So with that being said, um. The proposed, uh, change to mix use and, and parks and open spaces, uh, would reduce the heavy industrial, uh. To properties to 87.3 acres and would be about 6.53% total of the land within the city. This is still a 700% increase of available, uh, heavy industrial lands when compared to the comprehensive plan. So for criteria number one. Conforming with comprehensive plan, we still at the end of the day have more, uh, heavy industrial property per acre than we did before. So it does conform with that part of the plan. Uh, the criteria number two is, um. All zone change requests have been shown and identified as being, uh, as a demonstrated public need. When combined with the area and context as described, the proposed change would potentially create a diversity of uses. In actual settings within a well-planned area that could potentially offer residential, commercial, light, industrial and recreational uses. Uh, the third criteria is a proposal, um, fulfills a demonstrated public need for a particular activity or use of land as described in the comp plan. Uh, mixed use does allow for residential use, yet current, the current proposal does not include any construction or the intent of residential uses beyond the mixed use status. Um, but it does meet the criteria number three as it, uh, for a particular activity being, um. More usable lands and, uh, more usable parks. Now, the fourth criteria is that the zoning change would be. Compatible with the existing uses. And provide the city opportunity to better satisfy the various needs of uses in the future. And I feel that, uh, this whole proposal absolutely fits in with criteria number four because it will open up for wider use, wider range of uses. In that piece of the industrial park. So that is a finding of fact.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that. And, um, I appreciate getting, getting, um, the opportunity to be schooled because I really wasn't quite sure what that was. So thank you. Um, council discussion. Um, let's open this up for, for counsel. Um, what questions do you have about this?
This is Bobby.
Oh, go ahead Bobby.
I'm sorry. I should be raising my hand, but I can't find the button on here.
Don't find the blue button.
No, um, so for the residential use. With those lots, that would be where the business would be in front and the residence could be behind, right? Or.
I would have, uh, I'd have to check the, uh, mixed use, but typically mixed use, uh, does, would allow for strictly a residential piece of property out there. It would just have to follow the residential, um, zone requirements of, of the like. So that would fall under, uh, residential, commercial, any of the above can be used. Out there. They just have to follow the like of the, a similar comparison of other residential commercials or whatever the district is. So yes, you could have a strictly, uh, residence out there.
So Rick, does that mean then, uh, that. Changing this to mixed use, then if someone, someone purchased a lot and said they wanted to put a residence there, um. They don't. purchased a lot and said they wanted to put a residence there, they don't have to come to the planning commission for approval for that? They have to just follow the normal guidelines for approval for building. It wouldn't be a they wouldn't have to be requesting a variance because it's allowed with mixed use.
I am double checking that at the moment. It's been a little while since I've read the mixed use, so please bear with me. It's only been what a little over a month since I've opened these files, but it seems like it feels like it's been longer, so my apologies. Alrighty, so mixed use. The mixed use district is intended to allow residential, commercial, light, industrial, and public uses to go exist in the same environment. This district is intended to promote stability of property values, energy conservation and neighborhood commercial services, and residential living opportunities. So that would be correct. If somebody purchased the property, they would not have to come to planning commission as long as their intended structure fit all the regular zoning for a residential use.
Okay. Thank you for for clarifying that. I appreciate that. I did want to know what mixed use was so that I answered the other question I hadn't asked yet either. Any other questions? Don had a question. Paul, hold on. Don had a question before. You're muted, Don.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions that pertain to this, which is specifically the, I guess, was it called a request number one, which is the mixed use changes? First of all, I want I want to understand why we want to change those lots to mixed use. Why is it important to do that now as part of this?
This I can answer some of that and I know that Brian can add to it. And I think you remember too, we've we've had difficulty with these lots selling them and frequently if we've it's been recommended to us by a couple of different realtors that we change the zoning in there. The answer has always been up to this point, oh, we can change the zoning any at any time. With the request of to change the zoning to the park area, it seemed like an appropriate time to look at those other lots and change them to mixed use so that they would be more marketable to potential buyers and also satisfy the request that we've gotten that seem to make a lot of sense from realtors that we could get much, we could get quite a few more people looking at it if it wasn't zoned heavy industrial. And it was determined, not determined, it was suggested that heavy industrial was outmoded for that area, that we would never have that. So that's the that's the background that I know. So I'll leave it to Brian or Rick to add more to that.
Well, I I think you're spot on, Mayor. It just opens up the opportunities in that area. In the four and a half plus years I've worked for the city, I've been out to those lots probably at least ten times with potential buyers. They'll tell me a story of what they want to do and I have to tell them, I'm sorry, that does not meet the zoning. I said that so many more times than I had ever said, yes, let's see what we can, you know, what we could do. For example, the last one, six straight months ago, somebody wanted to create a venue for wedding photographer photography and it that's just another example of what what won't work in heavy industrial. We have not seen any desire for heavy industrial since since I've been with the city. I think that it the being outmoded is absolutely correct. We're just not an industrial nation anymore for good, bad, or indifferent. It's just not what the it's not what the market is requesting.
Okay, I guess my specific reason for asking why it was important is because the F H C recommends that we do not approve the change for rezoning on that section based on some documents that they want that we can't afford to to do. And I understand all that, but I guess in my mind, I'm wondering, since it's since these are written up as two separate plans, then we could, we could go through with the whole park changes and get done what we need to get done. Why not wait and try and get those grants and get those documents that are needed before changing the zone?
With all due respect, those those documents are not required. They are just requested. And we are actually meeting the intent of the F H A or F H C in providing a better opportunity for housing. This 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 movement in opening these lots opens up nine more lots for potential housing. I don't F H C sends out letters like this on a on a regular basis without ever looking at the criteria or without ever looking at the actual case. And I think that's what's happened here. Your your point is very valid. They are require they are requesting us to quote documents we don't have. But I pretty sure that the documents if when when they do ever get here, will say the same thing that we're talking about now. We need to open this up for more residential potential uses. And in there you can see a letter or memo I had writ to written to planning commission on that those regards. And as your previous planner and your contract planner, I I don't think it's necessary to wait on those documents.
Can you leave it right on that page for a quick second? The last line on that top paragraph says, city staff does not agree with the recommendation to defer findings for what could be up to two or three years for completion of the N H A and the B L I. So.
That is correct.
So you to me that says they're telling us they they would like us to defer that and you're saying, well, we don't agree with that.
They would like.
That's exactly what they're saying. And and I think in this case, for at least the way I look at it, this is this is kind of a blanket statement from them because their job is to see how much housing they can get. I think, you know, for our community, this has been suggested to us by realtors over the last five or six years, that if we changed our zoning, that we would have more opportunity to not only sell these. And in this day and age, in this market, we are seeing a lot of in interest in combined residential and small shop, the ability to build a shop in the front and live in the back or live above. And we brought this up to council a couple of years ago about changing the zoning so that it could allow for that. I looked at places up in Redmond that are doing that and having great success with it and it we just didn't move it forward. I just think this is a good opportunity. I don't think by not following what this F H C says or his requesting that we place ourselves in any harm at all. And I think this is a is a good move and our planning commission also agrees with that.
And yeah, in the memo, Brian, would you be so kind as to put us on page sixty seven? I did a quick and dirty analysis based on the most recent tax data that I had and we have a pretty good mix of housing based on property values and we have quite a bit of vacant properties as well. So I think we're far from being in a situation will be where we need to worry about these nine lots. So you can see that of the fifteen and twenty eight tax lots in the city that are low density residential, two hundred and eighty nine or twenty percent of those are vacant and represent twenty two, two hundred and twenty point six acres. Now, when I say vacant, that doesn't take into consideration that somebody could own a lot, own two lots next to each other and just have a yard on one lot. I know a lot of people have their their property spanning more than one lot. So for example, if you have three lots and you only have your home on one of them, your other two will be considered vacant. So those that number is a little skewed. But by those determinations from the tax, Lake County tax, twenty percent of our current tax lots are vacant. So and then as you can see on there, there's a breakdown of the prices. That's not a really good indication of the condition of the home, but it's better than nothing. So while this does not speak to condition of housing Oak Ridge as well as a housing needs analysis would, it does show the existence of potential housing opportunities and a range of values of lots. So I could read the rest of this if you like.
Oh, I've read it all if you're talking to me.
Anybody talking so.
Any other counselors? Do you have any any other questions?
I have a couple of questions whenever there's a good time.
Go ahead, please, Counsel Hallit.
Oh, wait, can I go first? Mine will be quick. All right, Counsel Maxwell, if you'd like to. Before Chrissy, so I'm curious, does this change the value of the lot since they're more versatile?
You know, I do not know that answer. That is a that that would that is not my field of expertise. I don't know, potentially. It could go either way because it's no longer residential. I know that the rumor has it that commercial lots are more valued because they're commercial. Well, how that if how that plays in the residential versus heavy industrial, I do not have an answer for you. I apologize.
Okay, would that be the realtors?
Yep, yep. That would be realtor's question.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Chrissy, Counsel Hallit.
Thank you. I do want to tag on to what Trish said, and I think that even though they're not maybe more valuable, they might sell better because there is more people, residential people looking for places than there is large companies. But one of my questions was, does any of this have any effect with the USDA portion of them, you know, having ownership over the O I P? And I guess, is there any penalties if we change any of the zoning to that?
No, not that I'm aware of. And I included the USDA long ago into this conversation before Brian came around. Unfortunately, I don't have that documentation for you and I but the question was posed to USDA with a interim C A. And we never got back anything that was alarming or any red flags.
As a C A, I would add that the restrictions will still be there. So any sale would still have to be approved by the USDA and and before it could be sold. And counsel.
Yeah.
Okay, my next question was Kathy probably can speak better to this than I can, but I remember when I first became a counselor, there was a little bit of discussion with putting, you know, possibly like kind of, I guess, an apartment complex or something of that nature in the O I P. And maybe I had heard it from the prior mayor, Kui, about putting that on the O I P somewhere. And I'm wondering if these zone changes make that more possible if that makes sense.
Yes, they would. It would if if the mixed use followed a medium density residential, which it can do, that's the purpose of mixed use, then you would follow the medium density residential district guidelines and you could build an apartment complex using those guidelines.
Yeah, using the median density value.
Medium density guy, yeah, medium density piece of our zoning limits.
Right, right. Actually, Chrissy, I have to say I had never heard that before. So so I'm sorry, I can't be of any help with you with you. I had never heard.
I was really having to jog my memory who had talked to me about it. And maybe it was Mayor Kui that they had, maybe it was with Saint Vincent or maybe Rick knows more about it. But at one point they were exploring getting just to help out the housing issue here in Oak Ridge and possibly putting, you know, like a nice apartment complex there around the ponds or something to that nature. And I remember that the zoning was a problem, so it wasn't even something to be entertained. So on one hand, I feel like by rezoning this, it kind of not only helps us sell these properties, but it could potentially help us out with some of our housing issues here in Oak Ridge, you know, and yeah, that's that's what I was thinking.
Great. Counsel Kenyon.
I'm confused about the part where zoning would be an issue on selling a piece of property. And the reason it's confusing to me is because the lot I live on was heavy industrial when we looked at it.
Right.
And it was just a matter of asking as a condition of the sale for the the zone to be changed to mixed use so we could put a house here. And within a month, you know, the contract was over and it was a it was a mixed use piece of property, so.
With all due respect, Counsel Kimlin, Kenyon, your property is still heavy industrial.
No.
You should look at your, yeah, I would, that could be a conversation offline, but I would happy to show you my my data says different. And that's from the twenty twenty tax.
Okay, we'll talk offline or Brian or somebody. Yep.
Yeah, yeah. But to answer your question, Don, not specific to your piece of property, we have had realtors come in and say, you know, people search entrepreneurs search for places where they can be shovel ready. And shovel ready includes the zoning. And so they'll look at what is offered at the O I P on on the blue sheets that they get and they'll go, oh, well, we're not going to consider that and move on. So when you offer mixed use, what it does is sends sends up a hello flag as a as opposed to a red a red flag when we have people that are looking that way. I totally agree with you. When there is someone like yourself or someone else who wanted to do a business, who is interested, is going to do it, is going to follow through and 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 check all the boxes, yeah, it can be done. But in general, trying to interest the larger market, it it has been told to me by several different realtors, it is very difficult. So that's what I know, but.
So I have a, yeah, I have a question. And so these lots, are these the lots that we were talking about doing some work on for adding maybe sewer line or electrical components to or something?
Making it a shovel ready?
Yes, that is correct.
Are are these the only ones we're talking about doing that with or are there other ones?
Ideally, we do every lot, but these are the initial ones.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So at this point, we need, we are at the opportunity to look at these ordinances and resolutions or look at the rezoning and make a decision as to whether or not we want to rezone these. And I am looking for my piece of paper and I've lost it here. There it is. Hold on, I'm getting there. This is not happy. Rezone consideration. Okay, so we're at eleven point one. And for consideration here and hold on, hold on. I need like two computer screens would be helpful. Okay, so if Brian, help me walk through this. So at this point, we can adopt this in one hearing.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so for ordinance nine thirty-two, which is the, the mixed-use change, we are looking to, the options are you can fully and distinctly read the ordinance on two different days before enactment, which this would be the first. You can read the ordinance by title only if no one, no council requests it to be read in full. Or you can enact the ordinance in a single meeting by unanimous vote, provided the ordinance is first read in full and by title.
I see.
Um, excuse me, Brian, may I make a small alteration to your statement? Ordinance nine thirty-two is for the comprehensive plan map for both heavy industrial and park gym spaces.
Okay, for both of them, then?
Yes, so the first ordinance is to change the comp plan map, second ordinance is to hopefully change the zoning map.
So, okay, so nine thirty-two is for the comprehensive?
Yes.
And then nine thirty-three is the zoning, got it. And we're doing it on both separately. And so we can choose to move forward with just a first reading, we can choose to adopt it in a single reading. And counsel, so if we, if we move, move forward with the first reading, that means we, we have to have another meeting before this can do and do a second public hearing, correct?
No, no, just another reading.
Just another reading of it at another meeting. If we move forward with the, the, to adopt the ordinance at a single reading, we can agree, if we all agree unanimously, to read it by title and then in full, and then we can enact the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the difference between these two options and in how counsel can handle that. And then, of course, there is, of course, the option that says that you don't want to do this at all and, and you just don't make a motion. So I don't mean to take that off the table. So I will put it to counsel. What would you like to do?
Is there any reason that there's a rush to pass these ordinances?
I would, I would counter that with, is there any reason not to?
I know you have some citizens that are anxious to play disc golf.
Other than that.
Yeah, yeah, this is Jason Nemer, and I really appreciate you passing these motions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. This is, this time isn't open for public comment, though.
Well, that is what I was looking for. I was trying to know why, what's the, is there, is there anyone waiting on these? That's what I was hoping for. So yeah, it's not public comment, but I do appreciate that.
Well, I'm glad he slipped it in then. Okay, given that, let me get back to my PDF here. So option three is to move to adopt the ordinance in a single reading, read by title, then in full, and then move to enact ordinance nine thirty-two. If that is the way the council, council would like to go, or if there is a counselor who would like to propose that, please do.
I agree with going that direction, so I will go ahead and just make a motion. I'm, I moved to adopt ordinance nine thirty-two at a single reading, read by title and then in full, read the ordinance, then I move to enact ordinance nine thirty-two.
Do those have to be separate motions? Because do we need?
Yes, we have to move on the first one or vote on the first one.
Okay.
I second the first part of that statement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mcfield. Thank you, Counsel Whitney. And so can we call for a vote?
Counsel McClelland.
Hi.
Mayor Holston.
Hi.
Counselor Forcome.
Hi.
Counsel Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Maxfield.
Hi.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor Hallit.
Hi.
That passes. Thank you, counsel.
Would you like me to read, ma'am?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So ordinance nine thirty-two, an ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge approving a comprehensive plan amendment, uh, map amendment for the, from heavy industrial designation to mixed-use designation for tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, zero, twenty-one hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, thirty-five hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-four hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-nine hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, twenty-nine hundred, and a comprehensive plan amendment, map amendment from heavy industrial designation to park recreational open spaces designation for tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, zero, two hundred, two thousand, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, twenty-one hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty, zero, zero, thirty-four hundred in Oak Ridge, Lane County, Oregon. Whereas the property owner of City of Oak Ridge has proposed a comprehensive plan and map amendment of the property mentioned above, and whereas the Oak Ridge planning staff analyzed the requested and prepared a staff report for the City of Oak Ridge Planning Commission wherein they reported that the request is consistent with the, and meets requirements for approval of the comprehensive plan, uh, map amendment. And whereas the Oak Ridge Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request on May nineteenth, twenty twenty and the June second, twenty twenty, Planning Commission meeting, and after taking public testimony and finding of fact, gave full consideration to the matter and recommended approval of the proposed amendments. And whereas the Oak Ridge City Council held a public hearing regarding the above-described matter at their regular meeting on August twentieth, twenty twenty, took public testimony and reviewed findings of fact, and upon deliberation concluded that the proposed comprehensive map amendment meets the approval criteria. Now, therefore, the City of Oak Ridge ordains as follows, section one, findings, the city adopts the findings, conclusions found within the staff report of the meetings noted above, order the official City of Oak Ridge comprehensive map, plan map is hereby amended from heavy industrial designation to mixed-use designation for the following tax slots. Tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, thirty-five hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-four hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-five hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-six hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-seven hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty, twenty-nine hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, twenty-nine hundred. The official City of Oak Ridge comprehensive plan map is hereby amended from heavy industrial designation to parks, recreation, open spaces designation for the following tax lots. Tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, zero, two hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, twenty-one hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty, zero, zero, thirty-four hundred. Effective date, this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after passage by the council and signed by the mayor. One more time by title only, ordinance side thirty-two, an ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge approving a comprehensive plan map amendment from heavy industrial designation to mixed-use designation for tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, thirty-five hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three hundred, tax map, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-four hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-five hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-six hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-seven hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty-nine hundred, and tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, twenty-nine hundred, and a comprehensive map amendment from heavy industrial designation to park recreation, open spaces designation for tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, zero, two thousand, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, twenty-one hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty, zero, zero, thirty-four hundred in Oak Ridge, Lane County, Oregon. And that is it.
Thank you, well done.
And we're ready to move on to three A.
I move to enact ordinance nine three-two.
One second.
Kathy just sent me a message and said that her computer crashed, so I think I'm going to take over here for a minute. So we have a motion and a second. Jackie, can we call for the vote?
Counsel Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Forcome.
Hi.
Counselor Maxfield.
Hi.
Counselor Hallit.
Hi.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor McClelland.
Hi.
Mayor Holston.
Guess we'll wait.
I mean, it still passes without her.
Yeah.
Does it pass or does it have to be unanimous?
I think only the first part has to be unanimous.
That's correct.
Okay.
Would you like to move on, Counsel Hallit?
Yeah, if we can go on to the next one, so that motion's carried.
Uh, this is, uh, unlike it says on the agenda bill, it's eleven-point-two. It's, uh, or thirteen, it is thirteen-point-two. It's ordinance nine thirty-three zoning map amendment. We're looking for a motion from the floor and a vote. Your options this time are the same. You can move for the first read, or you can move for the first read by title only, or you can adopt it a single reading by title and then in full, uh, read the ordinance and then another motion to enact. So the motions are before you.
I move to adopt ordinance nine three-three at a single reading, read by title and then in full.
A second.
Thank you, Counsel Forcome. Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Counsel Kenyon.
Hi.
Counsel Forcome.
Hi.
Counselor Maxfield.
Hi.
Counselor Hallit.
Hi.
Counsel Whitney.
Hi.
Mayor Holston. Counselor McClelland.
Hi.
Okay, that motion passes.
Does that one, excuse me, or does that one, they're have to be read it by unanimous? The other one did.
I'm not sure.
Not in attendance is the problem, so it's, to me, it's unanimous. I mean, everyone that's there is there.
I agree. We still have a quorum, so it seems like it should stand.
I would agree as well.
Okay, I'm going to actually let Rick Zilstra read this one. Give me a break if Rick's still up.
Yes, all right. So ordinance number nine thirty-three, an ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge approving a zone map amendment uh, from heavy industrial to mixed use for tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, zero, twenty-one hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, dash, zero, thirty-five hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, two, twenty-three hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-four hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-five hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-six hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-seven hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-nine hundred, and tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, dash, zero, twenty-nine hundred, and a zone map amendment from heavy industrial to parks, recreation, open spaces for tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, two thousand, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, dash, twenty-one hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty, dash, zero, zero, dash, thirty-four hundred, in Oak Ridge, Lane County, Oregon, whereas the property owner, City of Oak Ridge, has proposed a zone map amendment of the properties mentioned above, and whereas the Oak Ridge Planning Commission analyzed the request and prepared a staff report for the City of Oak Ridge Planning Commission, wherein they reported that the request is consistent with and meets requirements for approval of a zone amendment, and whereas the Oak Ridge Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request at May night, on May nineteenth, twenty twenty, and the June second, twenty twenty, Planning Commission meetings, and after taking public testimony and finding a fact, gave full consideration to the matter and recommended approval of the proposed amendments, and whereas the City of Oak Ridge Council held a public hearing regarding the above-described matter at the regular meeting on August, on August twentieth, twenty twenty, took public testimony and reviewed finding of fact, and upon deliberation concluded that the proposed zone map amendment meets the approval criteria. Now, therefore, the City of Oak Ridge ordains as follows. Section number one, the findings, the City of Oak Ridge adopts the findings and conclusions found within the staff report of the meeting as noted above. Section two, the order. The official City of Oak Ridge zone map is hereby amended from heavy industrial to mixed use for the following tax, tax lots. Tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-one hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, dash, zero, thirty-five hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, dash, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-three hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-four hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-five hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty, dash, twenty-six hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-seven hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-nine hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, dash, zero, twenty-nine hundred. The official City of Oak Ridge zone map is hereby amended from heavy industrial to parks, recreation, open spaces for the following tax lots. Tax map twenty-one, dash, thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, two thousand, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, dash, zero, twenty-one hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty, zero, zero, dash, zero, thirty-four hundred. And section three, effective date, this ordinance shall be effective thirty days after the passage by City Council and signed by the mayor. Adopted at the day twentieth, August twenty twenty. Title again, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance nine thirty-three, an ordinance of the City of Oak Ridge approving a zone map amendment from heavy industrial to mixed use for tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-one hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, dash, thirty-five hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-three hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-four hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-five hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-six hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-seven hundred, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, twenty, dash, zero, twenty-nine hundred, and tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, dash, zero, twenty-nine hundred, and a zone map amendment from heavy industrial to park recreation, open spaces for tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty-two, dash, twenty, zero, two thousand, tax map twenty-one thirty-five, fifteen, zero, zero, dash, zero, twenty-one hundred, and tax map twenty-one thirty-five, twenty, zero, zero, dash, zero, thirty-four hundred. In Oak Ridge, Lane County, Oregon.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I believe the mayor might be up again.
I am up again. You know, those little messages that you get that say your computer needs to be updated? Well, eventually, they don't give you the chance to say no. And so my computer closed down and decided to update. But I'm back. Thank you, Chrissy, for whatever occurred while I was gone. Okay, so where are we, Brian?
Three A, nine thirty-three.
Three A, got it. Okay. Let's see. Okay, so having read that, we're at the point to make a motion and approve this? Is that where I am?
To enact the ordinance, yes, ma'am.
Okay, to enact the ordinance at three A. Counsel, can I get a motion to move to enact ordinance nine thirty-three?
I move we enact ordinance nine thirty-three.
Second.
And who was that second?
Trish. Hi, Trish. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? There are no discussion, then Jackie, will you please call for the rule? Counselor Hallit.
I.
Counselor Forcome.
I.
Mayor Holston.
I.
Counselor Maxfield.
I.
Hold on, I gotta switch pages. Counselor Whitney.
I.
Counselor McClelland.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
And that's all, yeses, thank you very much, everybody. Let's move on. We are now going to be looking at our resolutions for committees. 13.3 is where we begin. Hold on, I gotta get to my.
Mayor, so CAA with a comment?
Yes, please.
So you've got the seven resolutions to look at, and 10 minutes, and an executive session scheduled, so it's either gonna go long, or you can push the resolutions to the next meeting.
Thank you for bringing that up. Counsel, how do you feel about going? We have an executive session scheduled that I really think we should do, or we can, I will entertain whatever it is you would like to do. I don't want to go too much past nine o'clock, but I fear that we will if we try to do both of these things. How do you all feel? I am open to your suggestions and willing to do whatever it is you'd like. Counsel President, what do you think?
I was actually gonna see what Counselor Maxfield thought, since she put the bulk of the work with her committee on the resolutions. I would lean towards holding off on the resolutions and continue with the exec, but I'm interested what Maxfield feels.
Yeah, if it were up to me, I would wait on the resolutions, but you know, I think you guys know where I stand with wanting to get through the strategic plan first, so part of it is biased, so maybe I'm not the right person to ask.
I don't think that's bias. I think that's using your brain to make decisions, that's good. So I'm just gonna suggest then that we go ahead and table number 13, which is our ordinance of 13.3 through 13.9, for our next meeting, which will be September, what is it?
Third.
Third, September 3rd, add it to that. And if counsel agrees, I would like to see a knot of hands or a show of hands here. Is everybody okay? If anybody doesn't agree, speak up. Just where we do it. Okay, I see yeses for everybody. Oh, look at you found your thumbs! Awesome! Good job, guys.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Counsel Kenyon.
I just wanted to mention that I think, if I hear correctly, that she would rather wait until we were done with our strategic plan. Maybe we should just push it out to after that.
Exactly. I think we probably can discuss it before we get to the strategic plan. We don't have to pass it, but I would like to have the opportunity for all of us to go through and at least give a tentative nod to this. So Tricia, you're thinking you would like to wait till the strategic plan is done?
Well, I'm comfortable with what you suggested. I definitely think that there are some that I would pass right now, and then others that I think, you know, hold off on, but maybe we all feel that way, so.
Yeah, I have some changes that I would like to see, or at least some discussion about possible changes on some of them too. So I think it bears going ahead and moving forward in September, and at least we can go through them and say, yeah, this one looks like it's gonna be a no brainer. We got it, this one might need some tweaking.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so let's move on then. We have no appointments or other businesses. I am going to, we have an executive session and we will come back. I don't really want to adjourn and move into an executive session without public comment, but I will. So, but I won't. So public comment, if there is anybody on Zoom or in the WAC that would like to make comments, I will either look for people who are speaking up or blue hands waving.
Quiet at the WAC.
No, all quiet at the WAC, okay? And I don't see any raised hands or people looking like they're trying to get on to the thing. So we'll close public comment. And at this point, the regular session of the Oak Ridge City Council is adjourned as we move into executive session for ORS 1926602I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, an employee, or staff member who does not request an open hearing. Do you so request an open hearing, Brian?
No ma'am.
Thank you. We will move into executive session now at 6:54 PM. All right, so anybody, Brian, can you, how do you do this?
Okay, so we're gonna put you in a breakout room, and I'm not gonna join you in that breakout room.
Okay.
And so I'm gonna try to designate one of you as ability to host, so you can record. So let me start to do that, and you'll get, you should have an invite pop up for you to go into the breakout room. Just accept that invitation.
Okay. Ah, I see it.
Yeah.
Then we'll open back up.
What's that? No, it's gone, it's adjourned. You're all done. There's nothing left to do. It's gonna be a while, but yeah. Counsel Kenyon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Did you get an invite to go to the breakout room?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It says you're not joining, I don't know, do you need another invite? Hey Mayor, I would start taking notes, I'll continue to work on how to get you to record. I haven't done anything, so I don't know what. Okay, so take some notes and I'll continue to work, and I'll text you if I get the record up. Bye. Jackie, you don't have to hang if you don't want to, they aren't coming back in the public session.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Same with you, Eric.
All right, I'll see you tomorrow, bye.
Bye.
Bye, Eric.
I'm sorry.
We're all back, I think.
It's still about 4:00. Here we go, they're coming in. You're muted, Mayor.
Okay. Well, that was an interesting experience. I took a few notes, so I will type those up and send them to you. Or actually, I'll type them up, I guess.
Right.
With the file. And hold on to them. And I don't think we have any further business. I don't know if... Hold on. Dan Barkley is still not on here.
I did see... There was someone here earlier. Hang on just a sec.
Okay. There's a 954-5711. I don't know who that is.
That's the only one I saw.
Okay, I know Dan was here earlier. But...
That's Chief Martin. I'm on there.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you for identifying yourself. So it is 9/11 and this meeting of the City Council of Oak Ridge is adjourned. Have a great time, everybody. Thank you. Bye.
Bye.